It's still working. It's still worse than that. I wish you would have.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Madison County Board of County Commissioners for August the 13th, 2019. Let us all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There will now be a moment of silence. Thank you. Again, just a brief reminder, if you have not silenced your electronic devices or put on airplane mode, please do so. Thank you. At this time, we have the agenda before us, and we need to amend the agenda. Forrest?
Mr. Chairman, if you could add item three, public comment policy. Item four, public comment. That will obviously increase each number below that by two. And then item eight, which is current assistant Tandy Cody, deputy health director, I should say Becky Webb, with the fiscal officer of the health department. Item 12C, which I think is now 14C, but in the manager's section, item C, youth league baseball, please. And then a closed session prior to adjournment.
The chair will move that we approve the amended agenda as presented by our manager. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, please raise your right hand. The agenda has been amended. The second item is the approval of the minutes from July the 9th special and July the 9th regular meeting. These have been reviewed. Does any member of the board have any recommendations, suggestions, deletions? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
No. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The minutes of July the 9th have been approved. Forrest, you will now review with us the public comment policy. Please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You have in front of you a proposed revision of the public comment policy based on y'all's previous discussion and input for you all to either adopt or make any changes to or take no action on, whatever you wish to do. But just a little background on the public comment policy. You all have been working from a policy adopted in 2002 that limited the number of speakers to five per meeting and said that only one from each side could speak. A lot of that had not been enforced, but when it was reviewed, it was viewed as being more stringent than what this board desired. So back in, also back in 2015, the public comment period was moved. It had been near the end of the agenda. It was moved by the previous board back in 2015 to the, right after the approval of the minutes, so one of the first business items on the agenda. Due to the number of, there was a lot of interest in public comment in February that led to the business, like people who were on the agenda to present contracts and things like that, not getting to present until 9:30 or 10:00. You all revised that policy back in March. Most of the things you did made that a much more expansive public comment period. You added the total of up to 20 people who could speak for up to three minutes each, and you removed any reference to what they're speaking about, so there's none of this how many are on each side type of deal. But due to wanting to carry on with the business of the night, you moved the public comment back to the end with some discussion about revisiting that. Couple of weeks ago, y'all reached out about revisiting that, and you have in front of you a revision that maintains the changes you made in March, with the exception of where this would be placed on the agenda. And what it would do, to preserve the opportunity for business to be conducted at a reasonable hour as well, you would have a public comment period at the beginning of the agenda where up to 10 people could speak for up to three minutes. And in the event that there are more than 10 people who sign up, you would have a second public comment period near the end for up to an additional 10. The chair would look at that list at the beginning of every meeting. If there weren't more than 10, it would just stay like it was. If there were more than 10, the chair would just go into order they're listed and start with the second round. That's there for you all to work from. You can revise it from here, or you can adopt it, or I can answer any questions that y'all have about this.
All right. Any discussion from the members of the board?
Craig or Mark want to read names?
We have. Okay. Again, to review, as Forrest had mentioned, there would be 10 people to speak before. If there is an excess of 10, they would continue to a session after the regular meeting prior to our adjournment. There will also be no interaction, discussion during the comment period. Commissioner's staff will not engage in a dialogue with the speaker, giving no comment unless they desire to provide information at the end after the public comment period. Any further discussion? The chair will move. We approve the new public comment policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The next item on the agenda will be public comment. We have 12 individuals who have signed up this evening, and in order, we will take the first 10, and then if the other two wish to speak at the end, they will be given the opportunity to do so. All right? Again, Forrest will be our timekeeper, okay? Please speak into the microphone. Hopefully, there's a mic down there that Donnie can loan somebody, or if there's one laying up there. Otherwise, it won't go out on the internet, folks, if you don't speak directly into the mic. If I mispronounce a name, please forgive me. Okay, I'll do my best.
Mr. Chair, we ask that they state their name when they get up to speak?
Thank you. That's a very good point. Please state your name. All right? Thank you, ma'am. The first individual is Joe Miller. Mr. Miller.
Is it on?
Is the green light on?
There you go. My name is Joe Miller. I want to thank the board. We've been here on several occasions and want to thank the board for indulging us. We are here about the fox trapping laws amendments that we're asking y'all to make. I just want to ask this board to, a lot of the motions have been going on throughout the county. There's a lot of, it goes on throughout our country, it seems like, and it seems like we tend to not look at what facts are anymore, but how we feel and our emotions in this board. I've emailed y'all quite a few factual information and documents, and I just asked the board to look at the facts and not the feelings and take it from a logical perspective. And that's all the time I need. I just want to ask y'all to consider taking it from that direction.
Thank you, sir. Penny, and I hate to say, I can't quite make out the last name. Oh, sorry, Penny. Okay, I didn't make it out.
Yeah, I'm Penny Baloo, and I'm here about the fox trapping.
We can't hear you. Did you turn the mic off?
I'm Penny Baloo, and I'm here about the fox trapping. I just want you to seriously listen to us. And that's it.
Jackie, and again, I can't quite make out the last name. Oh, okay. I should have recognized your signature, Jackie. Please come in.
May I give each one of you the resolution of the part you wrote?
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jackie Ball. I'm the chair of the fox trapping law. We are the fox owners and been a previous fox owner, still a fox owner, a little bit, but we feel like that the Madison County should be exempt from the trapping of foxes in Madison County. This summary was prepared by the Farm Bureau. The Farm Bureau directors met and looked at and prepared this resolution, and it was placed by, the resolution was placed by the unanimous vote. And I would just appreciate that the board, the Madison County Board of Commissioners would take this into consideration before you make a decision. Thank you.
If I could, if the mic wasn't on, I could hear what they wrote on. It's on now. It's on now.
On now?
Yeah.
I said, I'm Jackie Ball. I'm here as a fox owner in Madison County. I know that the trapping law of that trapping, but the...
Jackie, you've got to talk directly into the mic before it pick you up.
Yeah, there you go.
I said, I'm here against the trapping of foxes in Madison County. I know there are lots of folks here at the park, and they're my friends, and I'm not going, whatever's the decision made, I'm not going to be mad at none of them. But I feel like that we fox owners should be considered. And I present this summary to the Madison County Board of Commissioners, and I hope they take that into consideration. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, sir.
I just want to thank the board commissioners for taking the time to hear me out. I know I've been a thorn in everybody's side, and some of you won't be glad not to see me for a while or here. But somehow, this has kind of got turned around just a little bit. Some people think we're asking for the right to use foothold traps. We're not. We've already got that right by the state. It's right in the rules and regulations. It's already there. Everything is highly regulated and controlled by the state as far as the equipment we use. We're not asking for that right. The only thing we're asking for is the right to keep the animals that were already catched. I caught 21 or 22 fox last year, at least. No harm done, no damage done. I caught one twice, and I think he liked the bait I was using real good. But anyhow, thank you for your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I actually looked at the listing correct. There are actually only 10 names. It was written down along, so we have time for all 10 before we, so no one signed up will be speaking after. All right? Bart, Hart Barnhill. Evening, Hart.
Good evening. You hear me?
Yes.
I figured. As always, thank you for the opportunity to speak. First off, I wanted to thank you so much for making sure, at least for the time being, public comments stayed at the end of these meetings. Being that was amended, I'm no longer thankful. But I still want to say, the need for that is obvious, and I feel it's crucial to your impartial and expedient deliberations on many issues. Your obligation is to your constituency, all of your constituency. Most of the voters in this county aren't here tonight, nor are they squeaky wheels begging for grease. Very loud, very emotional, and very nosy minority is still at its core a minority. I was tickled to death that you recognized that, but now I'm sad. Secondly, I don't know squat about trapping. I admit that. Everything I do know, I learned here last month or in the week since the last commissioners' meeting. These trappers are vastly more experienced, trained, educated on the topic than anyone who spent a month Googling it. The loud minority I mentioned above will try and bully you with emotion and fear-driven rants, much of which will be misinformation, if not just toward gossip. I implore you, in the future, please consider facts and numbers and laws of higher value than fear, drama, and propaganda. It's already legal to trap in Madison. There are 36 licensed trappers in this county that follow the law, check their traps daily, and have written permission to trap from the property owners where the traps are set. Thirdly, and vastly more important, and something that's a growing concern, are you guys really ready to tell voters they aren't allowed to do as they please with their property? Do y'all want to face them on election day or in these meetings? They're not here now, but they will be when the elections come. Do y'all want to talk with them about whether or not they can do as they please with their property before then? I wouldn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hart.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Kevin Myers. I'm the president of North Carolina Trappers Association. I've been asked by your constituents to come here. I traveled two and a half hours to get here. I'll travel two and a half hours to get home. I'm not from Madison County, but I do represent people from Madison County that are your constituents. I have in my possession 97 landowner support letters. These are landowners from Madison County that support this. They want to have the right to do with and manage wildlife on their own property as they so choose. Trapping is legal in North Carolina. It's trapping is legal in Madison County. There's traps being set. As earlier stated, trapping is legal. All we want is the right to keep the fox that we catch. I'll present these to the board.
And again, I'm having a little problem reading.
Patty Walsh?
Patty, yes.
I just wanted to read something from the National Academy of Sciences. Here's the quote. "A growing body of evidence suggests that Lyme disease risk..." Can you hear me okay up there? "A growing body of evidence suggests that Lyme disease risk may now be more dynamically linked to the fluctuations in the abundance of small mammal hosts that are thought to infect the majority of ticks. The continuing and rapid increase in Lyme disease over the past two decades, long after the recolonization of deer, suggests that there are other factors, including changes in the ecology of small mammal hosts that may be responsible for the continuing emergence of Lyme disease. They found that increases in Lyme disease coincided with a decline of the red fox. As in the featured study, they pointed out that changes in predator communities like the fox may have cascading impacts that facilitate the emergence of Lyme disease." And if you Google "fox, ticks, Lyme disease," pages and pages of information come up about regarding that issue. I was just talking to, somebody mentioned something about the coyotes. Coyotes are having a big impact on our fox populations, but they do not, the fox populations, I just did a quick Google search, and they do not decrease Lyme disease. The fox is known to do that. And so I just wanted to make that statement. And also feel that these traps also are indiscriminate, and people's pets could also be caught up in them too, so Google it. It's out there.
Thank you, ma'am. Elaine Robbins.
Good evening. I hope you're not feeling too intimidated by my bullying. A couple of facts. We don't have...
Talk into the microphone, please.
Did you turn it off?
No, it's on. You just have to talk into it.
You just have to speak right into it.
Yes. It can't be in the neighborhood. You've got to be talking into it.
It feels a little obscene.
I'm sorry.
We don't have a leash law in Madison County. My dogs, before we were able to get an invisible fence up, would have a seven-mile roaming. Ours are not the only dogs in Madison County that get off their property. Even with our dogs confined on our property, we've had at least four sets, usually they come in twos, of other people's dogs on our property every year for the last five years. We've had cows on our property several times the last five years. The foxes are not the only creatures who are likely to be caught. In fact, as we know, since you can't intentionally trap a fox here, the traps that are set catch foxes when they were designed to catch coyotes. Not only other people's dogs and pets, but hunting dogs valuable for folks living here are likely to be stuck in the fox traps. And I wanted to just briefly address the suggestion that trapping is going to improve the health of the fox population. There was nothing in the NC Wildlife Commission that would support that. They said that populations stay about the same whether you trap them or not. The argument that was made the last time by the fellow who suggested that populations peak and then they starve and go down. Right now, I have so many rabbits on my property. There's definitely not an excessive property of foxes nearby me. I imagine several of you have probably seen rabbits this summer as well. So that argument seems to me not very fact-based. But what is certain is that we don't have a leash law, that people's pets are going to be at risk, and the only reason to ask for this change is to have more trapping. So I would ask you not to do it to save the Madison County pets and to keep Madison foxes in Madison. Thank you.
And again, please introduce yourself and hold the mic real close.
Is that okay?
That's good.
I'm Tricia Rusko. I'm with Friends of Madison County Animals. I'm a Madison County resident, and I love it here. One of the things that have been mentioned in the past is that this is an emotional issue. It's not an emotional issue. It's a fact that other animals get trapped in those traps. They are cruel, torture, and they shouldn't be allowed to be in existence, let alone used in a county like ours. We don't have an overabundance of red foxes. We need to keep the animals we have here healthy and happy and keep the, let Mother Nature keep the population the way it was planned to be kept, under control. The next thing is too, I just hope that our commissioners will keep Madison County laws, Madison County decisions, not Ruller decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Loretta Buckley Malachi? Hope I got that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this, does this, do you have to put your mouth very...
Right there, yeah.
My name's Loretta Buckley Malachi. Thank you for letting me speak. I really appreciate it. I have written and emailed you about this. I'm here to complain about, to register my complaint about Madison County EMS. On May 17th, 1:34 a.m., my husband, I, I'm 44 years old, I'm a mother of four, and I've had asthma since I was about four. And I take a steroid inhaler and I take albuterol inhaler. So I had a rough allergy season unknown to me. I, it turned out later, found out, I had blocking pneumonia, which for most normal people would make a deal, but I have asthma, so on the night of May 17th, or 16th, I became very ill. I woke my husband up around midnight. He called 911 at 1:34 a.m. Because I couldn't breathe, my airways passages were shutting down. Basically, these are the three just, my complaint. First is, it took EMS an hour and a half to get me to the ER. My husband called 911. At 1:34, I was dropped off at approximately 3:01. When first responders arrived, I was still conscious, and I was using my nebulizer machine in my kitchen, my prescription albuterol nebulizer machine. I was dropped off unresponsive, near death, with an oxygen level of 48 percent. I was immediately put on advanced life support. I was intubated, paralyzed, sedated. I was on life support for more than 24 hours. An hour and a half it took to get me to the ER. I got four kids, four children, the youngest is three. I received no treatment for my asthma, no albuterol, no solumedrol, no epinephrine, nothing. I was an arcan. Well, I couldn't breathe. Back at the hospital, back at the ambulance, 10 minutes into the ride. So I'm just here to register my complaint about my experience with Madison County EMS.
Being no other individuals who signed up for public comment, the public comment section is closed, and there will be no public comment after the regular meeting. Now resuming the regular agenda. We, the next item is a resolution and a public hearing relative to a name change. Forrest, if you will bring us up to speed on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you see in your packet and as you voted on last month, this is a request that has been made to change the name of Kenpac Lane to Printpac. It was named Kenpac back in '86 when they built the plant. It's been Printpac since 2010, and the current company would like for it to reflect their naming. It makes it easier to find for people who are looking for it. Statute requires a public hearing in order to determine if you're going to do that. So this is your public hearing that was appropriately advertised. You all have the authority to make this change, and then we will change out the signs next time they're ordered and would notify, I hope there's some requirements to notify the post office and things like that, that change. So if you all, probably the best way to do this is if I present that, if you all want to open the hearing and then see if there's any comment.
All right. We hereby will officially open the public hearing for the name change from Kenpac to Printpac Lane. That hearing is now open. No one has signed up to speak for or against the name change, and I believe, Mr. Attorney, that we can close the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The chair will move that we close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. The public hearing for the name change has been closed. Now a motion before, that would be, any discussion, and then the chair will entertain a motion to approve the name change. Any discussion, gentlemen? Do we have a motion?
I move we change the name.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you.
Next up, let me get through the paperwork here. Chris Watson, come on down, Chris. Good evening.
Good evening, Chris. Chris Watson with the Community Housing Coalition of Madison County. I'm here to ask the Board of Commissioners to approve our 2018, 2019 home fund contract. It's very similar to what we've done in the past. It's for $100,000 that we would use for rural rehab of low-income families with special needs here in Madison County. Specifically, we've got two clients on our waiting list right now. One is an elderly widow who needs a well. She has no source of potable water. And another is a gentleman who's a disabled vet who has no permanent heating source. And so we're looking to move really quickly on getting these projects underway, and we'll just, I mean, if you have any questions concerning what we do or how this contract's laid out. Madison County, for those of the commissioners that are kind of new to this process, basically I guess a pass-through for these funds... basically, that is a pass-through for these funds. It allows us to not have to perform yellow book audits for extremely expensive. But it's really just a pass-through to the county and I work with Kerry Ledford and Harold. It's been a really smooth process in the past.
And the purpose of doing it this way, Chris, is so that you guys get more money to use in the end versus having to pay for the administrative?
We still pay all the administrative costs.
Okay.
The main purpose is to avoid, like I said, the the yellow book audit requirements of HUD.
Yeah.
Which would probably cost us almost as much as this grant is worth.
Yeah.
Where we could do a financial review.
Yeah. Very good.
All right. All right, is there any other discussion?
How many clients did you help last year with this? Do you know, Loretta Buckley?
Typically with, with home funds, we average about twenty thousand dollars per home. So we, and our funding varies from year to year. So with this one, we'll try to do four to five homes if we can, stretch it to five. But we average, our last funding was at eighty-four thousand and we did three homes with that.
Okay.
All right. Any other? All right. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Community Housing Coalition request for a home contract.
Motion approved, Mr. Chair.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Chris, for all your other work too and the great work that's done by the ladies and gentlemen. All right, next up is Dee. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen, how are you?
Fine. And for our many guests tonight, if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself.
My name is Dee Hyman, I'm the Director of Community Services here in Madison County. And I come before you this evening on a respite grant. This grant was, we were alerted by Land of Sky about this grant a couple of months ago, about a month ago. And it's a grant we've held in the past, but for the last fiscal year, we did not. This is a respite grant that comes for two, there's two. One is for two thousand dollars and one is for eight thousand dollars. The purpose of the grant is to give out funding to folks who are caregivers. As you know, we have a large population of folks who are caregiving for a loved one, especially in community services. We have several folks who are doing that. The grant, the two thousand dollar grant would be part of resources in identifying folks in the community so that they could call into our office to be taken care of through the Veteran Service Officer, In-Him Aid Officer Edwina Craig. And so she's going to be meeting with and speaking with folks on the phone and helping with resources for folks who need caregiver support. The eight thousand dollar grant is a part of allowing or offering a certain amount of money, up to a thousand dollars, though it can be less, to caregivers so that they may get respite care services directly for their loved one. So we have worked with Mass and Manor, Elderberry, I'm working on the other one, to get a rate that would be for us so that if you needed a weekend or a couple of days to put your loved one in respite care, we would have the money provided to pay for that. Or you could hire someone as a caregiver to come in for a certain amount of time and that money would be paid to them. So what happens is we do an assessment to make sure that these folks are really in the need that they have and then we look at the funding that we have and decide what would best work for them. Because someone merely may need a couple hundred dollars to do a weekend somewhere or they may, may need five hundred dollars to help with care for their loved one. We specifically look at dementia care patients, Alzheimer's, those with memory care issues. So we care give us for taking care of someone with those deficiencies. So what I'm asking is that, if you have any questions and approach and allow some signatures so that we are able to administer this grant for the FY20.
Okay. Questions or discussion, gentlemen? All right.
I don't, just a quick question. I don't see in the paperwork anywhere where there is any required match. Is that correct?
That's correct, there's no match. And ten percent, I'm sorry, I forgot to say it, but ten percent of the two thousand dollars would come as an administrative to us directly. So ten percent of the two thousand will come to us for administrative fees. So we get some money for administering the grant, but the rest of the grant funded money would go out to the community to help the caregiver.
Is that saying ten percent apply to the eight thousand dollar grant as well?
No, just to the-
Just the two thousand dollar one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Caregiver Concentration Assistance and Caregiver-Directed Respite Service Grant.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Dee.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Dr. Kathy Ray. And again, Kathy, for everyone here this evening, please introduce yourself.
My name is Kathy Ray and I'm the Director of Elections here in Madison County. And my business here tonight is to present the Board of Elections' resolution to test new voting equipment during the municipal election in November. And this will spread across five precincts where required to test in at least one or in one one-stop. This particular piece of equipment is the Americans with Disabilities Act equipment. It is for disabled voters who have difficulty marking a ballot. This is called the Autumn Mark Ballot Marker. And the vendor for this is Election System and Software, who is our vendor for our DS-200 paper ballot imagers that we have purchased. And we will be testing at the Marshall Community Center, the Hot Springs Welcome Center, and the Mars Hill Public Library. The date of the test, of course, will be Election Day, November the fifth. And the estimated cost of the test is twenty-two hundred dollars. And I direct you to the resolution that the Board adopted at its July meeting. And this is the resolution that we are requesting approval for.
All right.
Do you have any questions about the test?
Any questions, gentlemen? All right. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Actually, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ray, Dr. Ray, the, the twenty-two hundred dollars that's the estimated cost, I know typically, the only elections that are coming up in November are the municipal elections. Those elections are, are paid for by the individual towns.
Yes.
So the twenty-two hundred that we're paying to test the machines actually is for what?
Twenty-two hundred is for the rental agreement for the equipment and the towns will not be incurring that cost.
Gotcha.
This is equipment that we've got to have in the future and going forward.
So this truly is a test run for us?
Yes, this is a test run for the whole county for the 2020 elections and for-
It's a pilot test.
Yes, this is a pilot test.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Ray.
Very good. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No, sir.
All right. We will entertain a motion, who will approve? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
On behalf of the Board, we thank you, again.
Thank you. And thank all of us in Madison County and all the people involved. I think we run a very good election process here. All right, Eve Kinley.
Mr. Chair, Angela Mason will represent our organization.
Please, come down. And again, please introduce yourself to the group. Mic needs to be held very close, almost uncomfortably close.
My name is Angela Mason, I am a 4-Her. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a prerequisite for the youth component of the North Carolina Association of the County Commissioners Annual Conference. I am to present a topic of my choice before, before attendance to the, my County Board of Commissioners. Six point five million members, the largest youth organization in the United States. What do you think it is? Boy Scouts? FFA? No. This is 4-H. I am Angela Mason, I am seventeen years old and I am a teen leader of the Bailey Mountain 4-H Club. I participate in 4-H through Madison County. I am the West District Secretary Treasurer. I have been in 4-H for eleven years now. Through my time with 4-H, I have learned things such as public speaking skills, how to make a resume, programming EVC robots, making frittatas and other foods, clogging, and many other things. In North Carolina 4-H, there are five districts. And throughout my 4-H career, I have lived in each and every one of them. Every place that I think and feel like I belong first in my new place that I live is with or through a 4-H event. 4-H is a home for me. This may seem peculiar as 4-H is not, is not a building nor a particular place. Though, last year, I moved about an hour and a half from my previous boat. The first district event I attended was the West District Teen Retreat. When I arrived, I knew no one. Less than a minute into being there, I was embraced like an old friend by a person that I have never previously met. Through my years in 4-H, I have accomplished much. But my accomplishments will not be the things that I look back upon in twenty years. In twenty years, I will remember the friendships that I have made and the things that I've learned about myself. Public speaking is one of the most feared tasks of 4-H in the United States. 4-H has a program solely to combat this problem, 4-H Presentations. I myself have given nine 4-H Presentations. 4-Hers as a group are statistically the youth that are least frightened of public speaking. Well, and I ask my non-4-H friends what they think 4-H is, I get answers such as agriculture and farming. I have never touched a barnyard animal. Other than a chicken. My 4-H experience has never been with animals. Though I have been involved with, though I have never been involved with an animal-based 4-H program, I have participated in the 4-H program called Mini Gardens. And through this project, I learned that I do not like gardening. The major part of my 4-H career has been with electricity and leadership. With 4-H, I have attended Electric Congress four times. 4-H Electric Congress is an event that is completely free and paid by Duke Energy Progress, Duke Energy Carolinas, and Dominion Energy. You qualify to attend this summer event by participating in a variety of learning experiences that focus on learning about electricity. You are bused to one of three rotating locations, Western Carolina University, UNC Charlotte, or UNC Wilmington. For three days, you participate in activities that help you learn more about electricity. In a couple of weeks, I will attend the youth component of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. I look forward to learning about my county government through this event. I may even see you and have the opportunity to spend some time with you learning about Madison County. 4-H has taught me much and I cannot imagine a life without it. Thank you for your time and attention. I look forward to sharing what I learn upon my return.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will see you in Greensboro. Becky Webb. Good evening, Becky. And again, please introduce yourself to our group.
I am Becky Webb and I'm a fiscal officer for the Madison County Health Department. And I'm here tonight to present our proposed fee schedule for the 2020 fiscal year. And you already have a copy in your packet that is split into clinical fees, dental fees, environmental health fees. There are explanations there out next to each fee change. And also, this schedule was approved by the Board of Health at the July meeting and I'm here to ask for your approval for the fee changes.
I appreciate the level of detail in the report, it's very clear. Thank you.
Yeah, very welcome. Any other questions or comments, gentlemen? Matt, you sit on that board.
Yeah, I've been through the long version of this presentation, so I don't have any questions. But if you guys do, I'll be glad to help Becky with them if we need to.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
Some are increases, some are decreases, I'll point that out. And that is, a lot of that has to do with the, the cost of the kits that we have to purchase at the Health Department. And then, surprisingly, the shipping and handling on those is what kind of eats up some of the expense on, on a few of these tests. The shipping is as much or more than the actual kit itself is, so.
Yes.
But we, as a board, have reviewed these charges and have found them in order. We have compared them to surrounding counties. We are in order and along the same lines as our surrounding neighbors. And so I would make the motion that, that we accept the new fee schedule.
Okay, we have a motion-
Or approve the new fee schedule, sorry.
To approve the new fee schedule? Do we have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky.
All right, at this time, the next item on the agenda is consideration pertaining to fox trapping in Madison County. Forrest. Okay? Yes, well, I believe we may have a representative here this evening from the Wildlife Commission, Matt?
Mr. Chair would do. I would like to ask, for the purposes of answering any questions that the Board may have, and also to provide any pertinent statistics and information, I would like to ask our District Wildlife Management biologist, Mr. Justin McVeigh, to please come speak to us.
Again, Mr. McVeigh, if you make sure to speak into the mic.
Yes, sir.
We are streaming live, so it won't go out.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody, you got, I'll let you guys go first because I've talked to them quite extensively, but if you guys want to go ahead.
So if we pass this law, what's the difference than what's already in place?
So currently, you can already trap with the same-sized traps that you would use for foxes in Madison County. What this would do would be allow trappers to keep a fox that they caught in one of those traps.
Because currently, you cannot trap a red fox. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
You cannot trap a red or gray fox-
Okay.
-in Madison County.
Okay. All right.
And to review what we had previously talked about, though, I'm looking for my list here. It is legal during the appointed seasons to trap coyotes, raccoons, bobcats, otters, beavers, muskrats, groundhogs, possums, skunks, and mink. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we currently trap for those animals-
Yes, sir.
-during their regular season in Madison County?
Yes, sir.
And sometimes we end up catching red fox, correct?
Correct. So when folks are trapping for those other species, sometimes you do get that incidental catch of red foxes or gray foxes. And at this point in time, when that happens, the trapper would release those foxes.
So it's really, really don't do a lot of harm to the fox? Or you said you're releasing them?
Correct. So the traps that are being used are designed under best management practices. They're designed to do very little damage, not to injure the foxes at all or any of the animals that are being trapped. That's the, the design of those.
A follow-up, if red, red or gray foxes are not allowed to be trapped here, does North Carolina Wildlife come up with that rule? Is that, is that a North Carolina Wildlife Association rule?
No, sir. So back like, I think it was in the seventies, foxes were classified as a game species, as opposed to a fur bearer species.
Okay.
So once that happened, the trapping regulations that the Wildlife Commission would normally take care of, like coyotes or mink or anything else, those don't apply to foxes because of that.
And I think you told me that on the email, sorry. It doesn't all, doesn't all go. But so, don't these regulations generally come from the North Carolina Wildlife Commission? Why, why is this one not?
Just because of what I just stated. Because for some reason, I wasn't born in nineteen seventy, I can't tell you.
Easy, easy.
But for some reason, they were classified as a game species and not a fur bearer species. So they have to be, basically, all those fox trapping laws are regulated by legislation, not by the Wildlife Commission.
Okay.
But the Wildlife Commission can go to the General Assembly and have them modify the law? Can they not?
I guess we could. I don't know actually on that one. Basically, in all the counties that have not had a fox trapping season and have wanted a fox trapping season, it has come forward through you guys. So, it's basically your decision whether or not you want a fox trapping season.
In essence, really, it's really not our decision. Our resolution would be a recommendation to our state representatives to do their job that they should be doing to start with. Is that an accurate statement?
I'm not going to say.
That was a good answer, actually.
It's an accurate statement, because what I'm saying is fact, right? We make a resolution.
You make a resolution, then your legislator, your legislator then goes forth and proposes it in Raleigh.
Correct, yes.
Yes, sir.
And they always do what we want. I mean, you know, like school board partisan things, they want that to happen, they did it on their own. Okay, I got it.
So, are they only able to trap on private property at an owner's?
Trap what? Everything?
Yeah, at an owner's saying.
So, right now, trappers can only trap on a landowner's property if they have written permission, which they have to get every single year. Trapping is highly regulated for these fur bearer species. The names have to be on the traps, the size of the traps have to be regulated, they have to check those traps once every 24 hours. There's a bunch of other ones I can't recall, but I mean, it's pretty intensively regulated for those fur bearer species.
I think a lot of people think these traps, or these big bear traps, it cuts legs off and stuff, but.
No, sir. I think that is a common misconception, that it's those toothed traps of the days of old, when most of the traps that are being used now fall under those best management practices. So, they're offset traps, they have laminated or padded jaws, they're designed to inflict as little pain as possible, they're supposed to be as humane as possible.
Now, go ahead, I'm sorry. Somebody else? Okay. The leg hole trap that seems to have everyone concerned, is that the only trap that's approved for use in North Carolina?
So, it's a size of trap that is regulated. So, there's multiple brands, there's multiple sizes. I don't know all that stuff. These guys that are in the Trappers Association know all that way more than I do. But yeah, so the size, I think, has to be seven and a half inches. And I'm looking to Officer Bryson, our Wildlife Enforcement Officer, for clarification.
Officer Bryson, you're free to join us if you'd like.
Please, calm down.
I didn't mean to exclude you, Officer Bryson.
No, no, that's. I have a regulations digest with the trapping information on the traps, if I can pass them. Ryan, you can kind of see for yourself because of the sizes as well.
Thank you.
And do you hear a lot of issues of, I shouldn't call Brandon by his person, but I know him well, to do that anyhow, Officer Bryson, sorry, of other animals getting caught in these traps? Do you respond to calls that other animals get caught that would not want to get caught, per se? A dog, a cat, something, something?
Sure, that's a good question. We get that question a lot. I've been employed by the state for 17 years, and I can count on one hand the number of times I've received that call. I hear a lot of stories, but I've not actually seen them.
A little closer, please.
I've heard a lot of stories, but not actually seen them.
And our data from those counties that did not have a fox season and then implemented a fox season, we don't get very many complaints at all about catching pets or other things.
Well, we in the South like to handle our own business, you may not get the call. I mean, that's just, yeah, okay.
A little more clarification on exactly what the request is. Okay, now, I've heard you say that it would request the General Assembly to change the law to allow the trappers to keep the animals that they trap. Would that also include red and other foxes after this change?
Okay, so, trappers during the normal trapping season with a valid trapper's license can already trap fur bearer species. They can already trap coyotes.
Okay, but is the red fox currently?
Currently, in Madison County, foxes, red and gray, are not included in that. I believe what you guys are looking at, according to your agenda here, is to add foxes, to allow foxes to be trapped.
Right.
So, they would be trapped during the normal trapping season, along with coyotes, mink, otter, everything else.
Okay. So, it's actually two provisions. One would be to add the foxes, and, you know, could also be able to keep the animals.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Mr. McVeigh, as the District Wildlife biologist, I know there are times that animals are captured, relocated to help relocate a species. Are these the same traps that are used by North Carolina when they choose to do that? Or do you, can you speak to that?
Sure. So, typically, the Wildlife Commission doesn't trap and relocate animals.
Okay.
We get that request a lot, specifically for bears, but that's not something that we do, especially with a species that would be a rabies vector species, like foxes, raccoons. You can't relocate those. So, if a homeowner had trapped a fox or a raccoon, they're not allowed to relocate those species, they have to euthanize them.
I asked my question improperly, I think, then. I'm sorry, I mean, you corrected me properly there. I'm thinking of like, for example, when the river otters were reintroduced to North Carolina.
Sure. So, we have used and do use currently traps for a number of scientific studies, for reintroduction projects. So, otters were reintroduced to North Carolina. We couldn't have done it without using traps, we couldn't have done it without trappers who assisted us with that. A lot of research that we do uses traps, say, looking at coyotes' movements, putting GPS collars on those. All of those things, we have to have a live trap, something that's humane, that the animal will go into. Those types of animals will not go into your have-a-heart type traps. So, that foothold trap is integral in those scientific efforts.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
So, we are asking for consideration of requests to ask General Assembly to modify the law. That is basically what we're doing. And General Assembly could say no. Correct?
That's my understanding.
I just want to be clear. Mr. McVeigh is not here to argue on behalf of this in any way. He's here to answer our.
To provide information, of course.
Yes, he's not here to lobby for or against the, I just want to be clear about that.
And I appreciate him coming.
Thanks, both of you for coming.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Justin, I have one more question.
Sure.
I told you I was going to ask it.
That's right.
I already warned you. Remember, I sent you an email. Can you tell me the current population of the red fox in Madison County?
No.
Okay, so, you can't tell me whether it's where it needs to be or not. What you can tell me, and you told me, and you and I had a great conversation, thank you, is that it's not extinct.
Correct.
Okay, but I don't know how many are here, or is it a normal race? Because we don't really keep up with that kind of stuff.
Not currently.
Okay. And I'm not trying to put you on, well, I ain't putting you on the spot, but I really appreciate it. I told you I was going to ask this question.
No, I mean, so, right now, we don't have data, good county-level data for fox numbers.
Yes, sir.
For critters like deer, we do have county-level numbers that we get through hunter-harvest, and then we can use estimates that way. So, we have a density estimate. For bears, we have region-wide, we still don't break it down to county level, but we have region-wide population estimates, and we get that through hunter-harvest, through roadkill, through lots of the different biological factors that we put into a big model. But for foxes specifically, no, sir, we don't have county-level data. But we have no reason to believe that they're endangered or on the decline. We seem to have a healthy population.
If this goes through, do they have to call it in like when you kill a deer, you have to call it in? Will they have to?
They have, essentially, they have tags and things, so they have to record what they catch and keep.
This wouldn't change the timeframe of the season in any way, correct?
No, the trapping season is set up in a way, it's such a manner that basically, we're, the trappers would not be catching the young of the year, so it's before that. But it would be the same season, which is, I can't give the dates, November to.
November 1st through February 28th.
November 1st through February 28th. And that is in the regulations digest that Officer Bryson handed out.
All right. Any other questions for gentlemen? Again, thank both of you for coming this evening. Appreciate that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do we need to get Officer Bryson's?
Yes, it's right here.
You can keep that one? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, comments or observations from the board members?
Well, this is a tough one. You know, I've had a lot of emails. I've had contact with this group here several times on regards to the trapping. I've had a lot of contact in the last 30, 35 days from people who are against it. I don't think they understand that the trapping is already there. All the emails I got were against trapping. We already have that. And, you know, that's something that we're not here to change. We're not here to say you can or you can't trap. We're just here discussing what they can do with what is caught. Is that basically what?
But it also puts the foxes on the.
Yes, it also adds the fox to this list here.
Sir, if I could speak up, I don't know whether they can hear me or not.
It's John. John, with all due respect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
So, what we have on here, we've got armadillo, beaver, bobcat, coyote, groundhog, mink, muskrat, possum, otter, raccoon, skunk, and a weasel. And that, with this, it would be a fox, would be added.
Someone else? I'm not cutting you off, please.
Well, I just, it's a situation that I, you know, I hate that we have to sit here as commissioners and make a decision on something like this, when, to me, it should be done through the state, through General Assembly, through Wildlife Commission, or somebody. I mean, we're, you know, we're basically making laws as we go here.
Well, we really aren't making the law. I think that's part of what you're referring to. There's great passion on both sides of this issue, and there's very good points on both sides, or more than two sides, of this issue. And regardless of what we do or don't do tonight, it will be settled in the General Assembly, State of North Carolina. Now, with not any disrespect intended, the General Assembly, more often than not, does what it wishes to do and doesn't pay much attention to what locals recommend. All you have to do is look at the city of Asheville, where three-fourths of the population voted that it wanted to still elect its council members. At large, and the General Assembly said, nope, you will elect them by districts. And now, that's in the books. So, even when there is an overwhelming majority of a population that expresses its view, even by the ballot box. So, my humble suggestion is for all of you who have a passion here, and you do, and I appreciate that, and this board has been very open to discussing this, allowing it to be thoroughly discussed, taking, I think, a very good fair amount of time for that. But your lobby efforts need to be spent on our General Assembly members. And I don't know how they're going to vote, and I have a suspicion they don't know yet exactly how they're going to vote, but your lobbying will determine that. And as Hart mentioned earlier, those folks will be up for consideration at the ballot box in all of the counties in the state of North Carolina. And this is not just a Madison County issue, okay? Personally, I have not seen anything here that I think that I would recommend that we support changing. What we have had has worked in Madison County for over 40 years. Now, I have no problem with both sides lobbying the General Assembly, where your efforts will have results. As Wayne was saying, whatever we decide to do tonight has nothing other than we vote. And with all due respect to who we would send it to, your influence is many times what the influence of the five of us would ever be. You assume that we have more influence on other elected officials than we do. And that's not a party issue, that is just a simple fact, okay? But personally, and I truly respect the views and the passions of everybody involved here, and have worked very hard to make sure that this issue is properly heard, and properly aired, and given good, good view. But I personally would not recommend changing what the current status is. That's just my personal opinion. Gentlemen? Anyone else have a comment?
Yeah.
Please.
If my dog got caught in it, I'd be pissed. But the bottom line is, I would hope my neighbor would tell me that, you know, they're trapping deer. So, you know, I've had some calls where a fox did kill a man's little sheep, one calf on Spring Creek. So, that's why I support it.
And I respect that. Gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, all due respect to your comments, I don't think that, considering the folks that have been here on both sides of the issue, I don't think passing the buck and just saying it's a Raleigh problem is the appropriate way to handle it. I think, one way or the other, this board needs to decide whether we want to honor a resolution or not honor a resolution.
I would completely support that. Yes, sir. I would completely support a vote. So, do you wish to make a motion? Or other comments, please? I don't want to cut anybody off.
Without knowing the population of the red foxes, you read my face, there's no way I can support this without knowing how many foxes are there. I am not a person in the right seat to be voting on this particular thing. I've had one of my animals trapped. I'm not, I mean, you can call it a motion, or whatever you want to. I love my animal, and that's what happened from there. And I disagree sometimes with my fellow commissioners on the fact, I'm not passing the buck to anybody. We're going to make a decision tonight. What I'm saying is, they have the capacity to make the right law, make it uniformity as far as that. There's no way that I'm going to be able to do that. And I was selected by a lot of different people, a lot of people. And I have been in different parts of this county, talking to lots of people, drinking a lot of coffee, having these conversations, and overwhelmingly, they have told me, we don't support it. It's not just about my decision, it's people who put me here. I'm a note.
Wayne, any other comments?
No.
Any other comments, gentlemen? No one else? I will speak. The chair moves that we do not recommend a change of the regulation. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of no change, please raise your right hand. All those in favor of approving the change, please raise your right hand. The motion is denied on a 3-2 vote. Again, I want to thank everyone. I do want to thank everyone again. Public participation is the whole key to government. And I want to compliment everybody in this room, all the people on both sides that expressed their interest to us. This has remained a civil, respectful discussion. It should be. That speaks very well for Madison County, and in the future, in other issues. We need to also stand up for what we feel is right, and we need to defend and be passionate about what we believe in. We won't always agree, guys, but we always ought to agree that we have the right. We won't always agree, guys, but we always ought to agree that we have the right, and thank God we live in the United States of America, where we can do this. Okay? Next item on the agenda is our attorney, Mr. Donnie Lawson. Donnie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have in your package a set of materials regarding, from the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding modifications of a roadway over in the Trust community.
Speak up, please. Don't take the mic off.
It's on.
Brother's be, but I guess I better speak here.
Okay.
The materials pertain to a change in a roadway over in the Trust community of Madison County. I believe it is State Road eleven sixty-four, known as Rock House Road. What has happened is that there has been a lawsuit in Madison County Superior Court regarding a section of that roadway that serves some landowners. Part of the roadway is main, it was on the state system, had been on the state system for a long time. In settling the lawsuit, all of the parties that used that roadway agreed to abandon a section of the roadway if the Department of Transportation would take over a new section of the roadway. So all of the parties that live in that community executed a petition that they sent to the Department of Transportation requesting the DOT to abandon the section and add the new section onto it. So before the Department of Transportation would either abandon a section or add a section, they refer that to the county, and they ask that the county agree and adopt a resolution that that is in the best interest of the folks in that community. So what you have in your materials is a petition signed by all of the people who use that roadway, who are saying, this is what we want to do. I spoke with Chris Medlin, who is your district engineer for District thirteen for the DOT. He is the one who has arranged for those petitions to be prepared. I believe he sent them over to your county manager's office. I spoke with him. I spoke with both of the attorneys representing all of the landowners, and they all are in agreement to do this. The, the board District thirteen is actually meeting tomorrow, and they intend to make this change over for that roadway. In order for them to take action, they need the resolution from you to basically concur with what everybody else has agreed to do. So in your materials, all the petitions, there's actually, I think, a little map that shows where the roadway is, and you have two proposed resolutions. One of them is to abandon the section of roadway from state maintenance. The other is to add the section. The only modification that needs to be made to each resolution, I think I put, resolve this the ninth of July.
Yes, that's right.
That needs to be changed to today's date. I used the template from the resolution that we adopted last month, and didn't get that change made.
Do we need to make these as two separate resolutions?
You can, you can include them, both of them, in one motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Questions, gentlemen? Being none, the chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the proposed road changes, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Donnie. Ms. Crystal? And again, for the somewhat smaller group we now have with us, some of you may not yet met you, if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself.
I'm Crystal Canty. I'm the summit officer for Madison County. So the first thing we have is the first budget amendment for the new fiscal year, 2020. And the first item is a transfer from the Health Department to the Transportation Department for five hundred dollars. And this is to assist with transporting Madison County drug treatment participants. We also received five thousand dollars from TBA to help with the Hot Springs Internet. We just received the Frontier invoice today, I believe, of the telephone purchases that was approved back in February. We're increasing the fund balance to, for the security forward amount from last year, and this will cover that invoice. There is also an increase of twenty thousand for Fund Thirty-Three, the Soil and Water Conservation Fund. This is to cover the cost of the library system project, and this was approved by the Soil and Water Conservation Board in July.
So that, is that for costs in and above what they had applied for the Pigeon River Fund grant?
Yes.
I actually think it's, they have another grant covering it. They're using their soil and water funds to cover it till that comes in.
Gotcha.
The Pigeon River, I think, is part of?
Pigeon River is part of it, yeah, yeah. So that's what I understand their, their board vote to cover that difference in July.
I got you.
Makes sense, yeah.
All right. Other questions or observations? Okay. All those, the chair will entertain a motion, I'm sorry. To approve Budget Amendment One for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty. Do we have a motion, sir?
I will make that motion for the two thousand.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Budget amendment is approved.
Next, we have the July financials. The unassigned and unrestricted bank balance as of July thirty-first was four hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight. This may seem low, but this is just due to our encumbered amounts. We've already encumbered for the entire year in our bond amounts. So, but those will not be paid until later in the year, but we just went ahead and encumbered them. Also, our general fund expenses were at three point seven-two percent of the budget, and revenues were at one point nine-eight, because we will not receive our revenues till later. And we're at eight point thirty-three percent of the way through the budget for July.
Yeah, it's kind of ugly right now.
Yeah.
We had it pretty close.
You feel comfortable we are now, though, right? It's, it's a percentage and everything, we're right on target, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're, because we won't get our revenues till later, we're, we're looking, we're good. And we have plenty of fund balance to, to cover that.
When you say later?
Well, like, the bond we have is almost one million in bonds that'll be paid. Eight hundred thousand of those will not be paid until February, and then another, I think, the fifty-three thousand, that will be paid until June. So we have, you know, February and June, we'll pay a million dollars.
And we'll have about ten million in property tax revenue.
Yeah.
Plus much sales tax.
Yeah, we have not received any sales tax yet for the year.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that the standard timeline? It seems a little late.
Now, with sales tax, we're, it'll be in the next report.
Okay.
Is to, we, we receive the month they're collected, so June sales
Yeah.
are just now being processed by Department of Revenue. We won't get that till September, so it'll be October before we have July sales. So it's always three months.
I just want to make sure that budget holdup in Raleigh isn't going to affect our sales tax money.
Ooh, good point. All right.
Um, didn't we have your tax refunds and releases?
There are still half the checks in here, gentlemen.
Three thousand two hundred and ten dollars for that.
Give me just a second. Just want to look over them just a second.
It's under C.
I'll flip my screen here. Not as many as it has, man.
No, they, that consistently has been getting in. Better, better management by the tax office.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just as an FYI to the public who is here, we're, we're dealing in a very small number on one sheet, and it's much better than it was years ago. Which means more accurate work being done. All right?
If no.
We need to approve that, so do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve our releases and, what did I say?
You've got it.
Refunds and releases.
Yeah, tax releases and refunds.
Yes, sir. Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
Okay, so the, this is your revised June thirtieth financials. And again, we haven't received all of the sales tax, so we estimate another about three hundred thousand. And, but even as of right now, we are sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. We exceed our expenses. So we're looking good, and we expect to get another three hundred thousand. At this point last year, I just want to note that we were under two hundred and three thousand, so we're looking really good. And we also ended up adding seventy-seven thousand at the end, once everything closed out last year.
Is it reasonable to say that the over, very high percentage of expenses to be accrued to last year are in?
Yes.
So we're looking at a fairly substantial surplus from last year. Excellent.
No, better than we expected. I wouldn't call it substantial. Still cutting it pretty close.
But we budgeted well, county managed well, and it's in the black, not the red. I can't say the same for, if I look at them. All right. Thank you, Crystal. I'm taking, I'm going to take it straight. All right?
The last is the Via Health. This is their fourth quarter financial report that they are required to send us as their entity that handles our mental health fund.
Anything jump out on that report to you or Crystal by chance that we need to pay more attention to than, than others?
Uh, not to me.
If it was, you'd point it out to us, right?
I would.
Okay.
It's pretty consistent.
Yeah. And just as an FYI, I do now sit on that board.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Forrest, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that budget, we are looking pretty good. If another three hundred comes in, we're going to be looking at three to four hundred of surplus, which, out of a twenty-five million dollar budget, is still pretty close. And when you're looking at the fund balance, I mean, it's about where we're doing it. When we look at our fund balance, which we've been trying to grow, but we've been kind of, we've been doing that gradually. So that will help build our savings account to help us get through the slow months, but also go beyond that and set aside money for some of the one-time and capital projects that have been discussed, so we continue to make good progress on that. And once we know the numbers that are coming in for next month, we'll, we'll kind of give you all a full report on that, what it's doing to our fund balance and capital outlay options and things like that. Very much a, a good job by our department and employees, for the most part, keeping expenditures, most of which are recorded, at ninety-two percent of budget last year. Got a few more revenues to come in, a few small expenses, but very, very good job by those folks in Washington, D.C., as we went. To be honest with you, one of the reasons you have some of that money left over is lapse salaries, and hopefully the decision y'all made to increase some of those to deal with turnover. We're not going to have as much lapse salary money, but that's still a good, you know, a good problem to solve in that process. Some updates for you all, a couple of things. Online tax bills went live yesterday. Twenty nineteen tax bills have not been sent out, but if you go to the Madison County homepage, you can now click where you've always, for many years, you've been having to look at GIS and your property tax cards and records about ownership. You can now go to another link that says Tax Collections Portal. You can go look up your bill. It's all public records. You can look up a lot of stuff there, but you can see a lot of information about kind of where your situation is at one point, where you don't have to call the tax office. It's a really good service to the public that most counties have had, but our new software has allowed us to implement that. A few little tweaks will happen with that system the next little bit, but that's up and running, and should help there. We've had online payments be available for some years, so somebody can really handle everything online pretty easily, like you can about all your other bills. So it's good that we're joining the rest of the world on that, so that's good. One bit of news that's surprising is just something that says something about our county, and it's mostly small counties that perceive this, but Department of Commerce put out some information last week. Quarter-over-quarter growth from quarter, first quarter of twenty eighteen to first quarter of twenty nineteen, Madison County had the fourth highest rate increase in our job growth.
Yes.
So it was mostly small counties that, that had that number move, and unemployment is historically low in a lot of various historical levels in this area. We're the only county in this area, well, Graham, Graham was number one, it was a tiny county. They had ten percent growth. Penders are a little bigger county, six point two, bigger than us. Madison's at four point six, Lincoln's at four point five, they're bigger than us. But that's a good sign. That includes jobs in the county where we know we've had the forty-some jobs expanded at Boochie. We've had jobs being added at Super Braces. Jobs being added in a ton of small areas, and then that also includes our Madison County people who are working, many of whom work in Buncombe County. So it's all, that's all good news. You can go see that. Trent Paxwell is growing. Perilous Blower in Hot Springs has been growing. Those are your big ones, and then you have a lot of, you know, a lot of smaller employers, and then some big ones in Buncombe County. We have, you all have authorized the MOU on the new driver's license space. We're getting quotes to do that construction and working on some design that we had to do. We're very close on getting that started. The five-day-a-week office can start on our hill where they are, so we're working through that and getting that work done. We're moving along on that. Back about three weeks ago, the senior team from Department of Natural and Cultural Resources spent two days in Madison County as a follow-up to the Hometown Strong Initiative. We had the Deputy Secretary of Cultural Resource, Natural and Cultural Resources, as well as the Assistant Secretary, as well as the leads from Historic Preservation, the Land and Water Fund, the State Library, the State Arts Council, and Archives Office. So how does that pertain to Madison County? They, that agency's over all of those things and more. But they went to each town and met with leaders there, talked about some of their issues to just see where their department might be helpful. They went, when they were in Mars Hill, they went out to the Smith Farm property, which is, has been a recipient of land and water funding to help with that purchase of that land. They went out to the Anderson Rosenwald School in Mars Hill, which Historic Preservation's been involved with, and there may be some other opportunities as, as follow-up comes with these things. They visited the Hot Springs Library and toured, walked through downtown Hot Springs. This is the agency that provided the fifty thousand dollars for the Wi-Fi down there. They spent a morning on the island, talking about following up on the SMART initiative, which is also a part of that. And they looked at, basically, a public art project that's moving forward through those grant funds, so, and some potential items. So, and some potential items that can be worked out as we move forward on different things with the island. So very good when those folks are willing to spend that time in Madison County and come back. Some of that, they have already been very attentive to the county's issues, and it looks as if they will continue to do that. But appreciate them doing that. And I think, just like we worked Hometown Strong, I think we were one of the first this agency made that outreach. There was also follow-up from the Hometown Strong team in Commerce. They went to Advanced Supervisors that same week. And also went to an event that the Page Exhibition in, at the middle school. So very good to have that going on. You have a surplus property item for your action. Property that you had a bid on in April, you accepted a bid in April. Upset, it's all been advertised, and the highest upset bid is $16,500. That was received on July 5th. No other upset bid received. Your current bid is $16,500.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the bid of $16,500 and put this back on the tax rolls.
The Chair will second that motion, and I agree, putting it back on the tax rolls. Any further discussion?
Forrest, how, how long, we've had this upset bid process going on for quite some time, correct?
Yes, since April 26th. It actually finished July 5th, just in, just short enough for us to get on here, so it wasn't quite as long, but yeah.
Okay.
Just three months.
Any other comments, gentlemen? All right. All those in favor of accepting the upset bid of $16,500, please raise your right hand.
Okay, next you have some things I'll pass out to you. First is an item in regard to Boden, but second is a description of the property. And you all have already discussed this back in May, but to update everyone, because it's really not been big, it's not really gotten out there that much. But the board, the county owns some land in the industrial park out past the BK building that backs up to Elderberry that you all have voted to provide to the baseball youth league for them to build a field there. It's right next to the property that the Board of Education owns, and they don't, they formalized it, but they've indicated they're willing to do it too. So you would have two fields right there that are right next to your high, near your high school field, near your fairgrounds. There's already parking, and there'll be a little walk-in for parking, but it's, it's going to be okay. So the proposal is the youth league will have most of their laboring materials donated. There was discussion of the user agreement. It's become evident that a lease is the best way to work through that. There's no prom, the county's providing land, there's no promise of money, but, but county may fund something in the future. It may be ongoing, it may be one thing at a time. This is, basically, the idea is to do something very similar to what's been done with fairgrounds, where we leased it to them, and they have improved everything up there. We support it in the ways that we can.
Correct.
So in order to begin that process, to actually move forward with the lease, there has to be a 30-day notice prior to the board entering into a resolution to adopt that at the regular meeting. And you all could authorize us to publish that required notice as required by Derno Statute 168-272.
Okay. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, the Chair will move that we post, authorize our attorney and county manager to go forward with a 30-day notice that is required.
Second.
Now the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Good use of the property, gentlemen.
Would y'all like to do the naming and naming order?
We can do that. Yes, sir.
Would one of y'all like to?
Read it. One of you guys won't read it?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll read it just for the record. I've missed half of it, of this speaking. Resolution, naming the Josh Merrill Baseball Field in Marshall, North Carolina. Whereas, the Madison County Board of Commissioners has resolved to dedicate property on Carolina Lane in Marshall, North Carolina as youth league ballfields to serve as a place of recreation for the youth of Madison County. And whereas Josh Merrill, a native of Madison County and a graduate of Madison County Public Schools, was an avid athlete who played baseball for Limestone and Piedmont College. And whereas, desiring to give back to his community, Josh played an active role in Madison County Youth League, serving as a board member and as a coach and mentor for youth in Madison County. And whereas, Josh believed in creating better opportunities for young people in Madison County and set a strong example of integrity and service respected by people of all ages. And whereas, the Madison County Board of County Commissioners and the Madison County Youth League wish to appropriately honor the memory of Joshua "Josh" Lane Merrill. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of Madison County to hereby name the Youth League Baseball Field in Marshall, the Josh Merrill Baseball Field. Be it further resolved that the Madison County Board of Commissioners presents this resolution in memory of Josh Merrill for his commitment and dedication shown to the youth and county of Madison, adopted this date, 2019. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'm going to make the motion to approve this.
Motion, multiple seconds. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Well done, gentlemen.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you very much. Being no other business to come, I'm sorry, sir.
We need to go into closed session. All right, sorry.
Being no other business on the agenda, the Chair will move that we return to closed session. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor of returning to closed session, please raise your right hand.